Good morning. Special session, Mayor and City Council meeting, ten AM Wednesday, May fourteen, twenty twenty-five, City Hall Complex, Council Chambers, close meeting to order. Would you please rise for the pleasure, please? Mr. Doyle, yes, go to the honor.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation, united, without borders.
Thank you. Okay, any call to public again? No? I want to inform everybody, we got two. Ms. Achar, would you please introduce yourself? And then we have from legal?
Yep, we have Rodney States. I'm here with Joe from Pierce Coleman. He's one of the attorneys in our office. This is to show you get two for the price of one.
Thank you.
The great benefits that you get. Well, yeah, I wanted to bring him down and have him be able to meet you and interact with everybody.
For those times when I may want to take a vacation day and have somebody fill in for me.
Thank you. Okay, so no call to the public. We move on to number four discussion items. Number one, discussion direction possible action and kind support submitted by Consulado Mexico for the use of the city sound system for the benefit concert scholarship Alejandro Caro to be held at the Winter Museum on May sixteen, twenty twenty-five. Ms. Melendez?
Yes, the Consulado asked me to request this. It's been done in the past. And all the, whatever they get from the concert goes to the Imbebecas scholarships. They have a person there that takes care of the system and they will be responsible for anything that happened to the system.
Okay, thank you. So we have the motion.
Mr. Mayor, yeah.
Oh, go ahead, question.
Yeah, I moved that we approved that.
Okay.
The lending of the of the sound system to the Consulado Mexican.
David. A second.
You have a second? Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Number two, discussion direction possible action to approve the contract for the administration services building renovation formerly known as the Chase Bank Building to be completed by McKinstry San Central LLC?
Mayor, motion to this to be approved?
Second?
Second. Do any discussion?
Aye.
Go ahead, Ms. Montier.
Mr. Kramer, on this contract, will there be any penalties? The attorneys are here too. If any changes are to be made during the project or after the project? If things were to be modified, if you will?
Very good question. This is the first contract that we're just approving them as they did the presentation. They being the McKinstry Company. We are going to approve that contract that you're talking about, the next phase. We're getting this phase going so they can get the plans, they can get together. In essence, I guess would be the punch list of the progress and the contractors that they will be hiring. So this is just the initial contract to get that going. The large contract that you're talking about with when the pass would be if they do not finish will certainly be written into that. Mr. Estes and I definitely discussed that with them. Obviously, this contract came with much back and forth. Obviously, Mr. Estes was working with them to make sure that the city in O'Gallas was covered in all aspects of this contract. And certainly, when they bring the next contract, obviously, that will be run through Mr. Estes as well before we bring it to the council, but that certainly will be part of the contract. And we discussed that with them and I believe they're looking at, again, as I said, to the end of December, but they will certainly put that in there.
Yeah, that's correct. This contract is for the design and engineering of what the construction or changes are going to be. I don't anticipate there's going to be any change orders because this is just the basic design and engineering of the of the facility. The papers are a little out of order. What you see at first is the TIPS contract. So you're probably wondering, what is this big long TIPS contract? This this project's being procured under a cooperative purchase agreement. So that means a co-op contract is a contract that another government entity already bid out and that we can piggyback off of so we don't have to go through the cost and time and expense of bidding out that service. So you'll see on page, it starts on page fifty-three, is what I call the tie-in agreement, the actual contract between the city and the contractor under that co-op contract. And you'll see that, for example, it's called out in the first paragraph that they're a licensed contractor and and they have a contract under the inter-local purchasing system, which is TIPS. It's a, it's, if the councils remember, we would do a lot of things through the Mojave Co-op and other different types of co-ops. This is just another type of co-op. This one's based out of Texas. There's a number of them across the country that all different states and municipalities use for these types of services. So what this does is it acknowledges that agreement, incorporates it in, and then provides for our specific terms where we say that Arizona law applies, this is the scope of work, these are the specific requirements for this job. These are the liquidated damages if you fail to complete within a certain period of time, stuff like that. But as as Joel mentioned, this is the design and engineering portion of the ultimate work that's going to be done to improve the the facility so that it can be used for administrative offices.
And thank you, Joel. That's why we have you here for legal speak, to get all that covered, because you're the one that did all that. Thank you very much for doing that as well. And yes, to answer your question, to further that, and what I stated to all of you before, that this is the direction that we will be going from this point forward as long as I'm here as city manager, because I think it's important that we follow the protocol hiring these companies, making sure that they're doing it, following it. You asked the question and we're certainly going to bring the companies that are doing business with us, they're going to be up here giving us a day-by-day type of thing, but at least a monthly reports. It's important. And certainly, the liquidated damages that have been waived in the past for I don't know how many years is certainly not going to hold true from this point forward. Every company that does business with the city in O'Gallas will be expected. The completion date is whatever that date is, that's the date. And nobody gets to waive that liquidated damages except council, because council has the ultimate authority on that, and that's the way it should have been. And I can't change the past, as I said before, but it certainly starts right now. And they're well aware of that. And it's, I don't see a problem with McKinstry because it is a remodel project, but it certainly, they they know the expectations. Of course, they're going to step in and we're going to get other contract with them. Certainly, we're working with the police department, what's taking place over at the old armory. And certainly, they're going to be overseeing that as well, because we want to bring everything into the scope of somebody's overseeing it, they're reporting back to myself and council and working through legal to make sure we follow all parameters so we don't put the city in any binds whatsoever. So just to say that that's going to be the process from now on, it certainly is. And certainly, liquidated damages is part of that, because you hold companies accountable. We're not going to be pushed around anymore. The city in O'Gallas is standing up for what's right for them, for us and the taxpayers. So I think it's important that we let everyone know this is the way it's going to be from now on.
Yeah, I appreciate the transparency, Joel. And and just one more question, Joel. So this includes all the permit cost of all that includes in, is included in the contract?
No, not in this contract. Again, this is just the design and engineering. So we're going to, once they get everything designed and engineered for what the improvements are going to be, then there's going to be the construction contract for the actual work where that's where the permits are going to come in and stuff for the for the work. There's no permits necessary for them to go in and.
That's why it's not here?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
I will say that we will, I will do one thing. Any permits that the city incurs, we will waive those, because we're not going to bill ourselves.
It's just doubling pay. Charge for them for a permit and they're going to pay us for the permit and it's like.
So I'll step in and do that. Just so you know, I'm going to be up up front with you. We'll probably waive those permit fees for the city, from the city, unless we have a problem with that.
And just to make it clear, the sum of this contract is for two hundred and five thousand seven hundred and fourteen, correct?
Correct, yes.
All right. So any more discussion? All in favor? Aye. All opposed? Motion passes. Move on to number five fiscal year twenty twenty-five dash twenty twenty-six budget, budget workshop regarding the presentation discussion of the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six primary budget. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. We'll start with something that we, that you as the council tabled. So if you want to hear the report that Jean was going to give, our chief financial officer, you're certainly able to do that if that's what you're, would like to hear. I see heads shaking, yes. So we will move forward then, Jean.
So last week, you all received the electronic copies of my report. Do you need a physical copy? I can run and get them real quick if you need physical copies, but they were part of the full agenda from the last meeting. Okay. Then I'm just going to kind of go over the numbers like we normally do. Through March, the finance, we should be at about seventy-five percent of our entire budget. For our general fund for revenues, we are actually sitting at ninety-one percent of our budget at twenty-four million, seven hundred and ninety-eight thousand, four hundred and ninety-eight dollars. And for expenses, we're at fifty-nine percent of the budget, which is twenty-two thousand, three hundred and fifty-three thousand, twenty-two million, three hundred and fifty-three thousand, nine hundred and ten dollars. For our shared revenue, it's at seventy-six percent, which is seven million, five hundred and forty-six thousand, seven hundred and sixty-six dollars. For our sales tax through March, we collected one million, nine hundred and fifty-two thousand, seven hundred and sixty dollars in March. So we have deposited six hundred and ninety-five thousand, five hundred and sixty dollars more than we had the previous March. So we're sitting one million, one hundred thousand, one hundred and four dollars above this point last year. For the general fund, I already mentioned the expenses. We still have a few departments that still show above the seventy-five percent. A lot of that were our major contracts where we pay them like once a year and then it sits there the whole time. For our HERF and our overweight, for HERF, we have collected two million, three hundred and fifty thousand, three hundred dollars, which is ninety-one percent. And for overweight, we have collected two hundred and eighty thousand, seventy-five dollars, which is ninety-three percent. For expenses for HERF, we have expended out two million, five hundred and forty-five thousand, five hundred and eight dollars, which is sixty-eight percent of the budget. And for overweight, we finally have an expense and that's thirty-two thousand, six hundred and forty dollars at three percent. For sewer, we have collected two million, seven hundred and seventy-five thousand, two hundred and sixteen dollars, which is ninety percent of our budget, and expended out one million, two hundred and sixty-seven thousand, four hundred and six dollars, which is fifty-four percent. For water, we have, yes?
On the, on the top, you have sewer, on the sewer, we have more revenues of one million, five hundred and seven thousand, eight hundred and ten, correct? Which is what you have on top.
Is that the number that's on the, I don't have that?
Top, top right corner.
Oh, yes, I think I do. Hold on, just one second. Let me look at sewer.
It's what you gave last.
Yeah. I've gotten used to now seeing it up on the screen. I don't look at my.
Yes, year-to-date sewer revenues are more than year-to-date expenses by one million, five hundred and seven thousand, eight hundred and ten.
Yes, so our revenues are above our expenses by that much at this point. For the water, we have collected two million, nine hundred and nine thousand, nine hundred and forty-nine dollars, which is eighty-three percent, and expensed out three million, four hundred and nine thousand, one hundred and seventy-nine dollars, which is seventy-one percent. And in this, when our expenses are over our revenues, which we knew were going to happen with our water. I said on this one, our expenses are higher than our revenues for water.
And this, we're looking, on top, you do have revenues are less than year-to-date expenses by four hundred and ninety-nine, almost five hundred dollars. That brings us down to more or less a million, seven.
Yes. And then for sanitation, we have collected two million, two hundred and sixty-three thousand, two hundred and seven dollars, which is eighty-one percent of the budget. We have expensed out two million, one hundred and sixteen thousand, three hundred and eighty-nine dollars, which is fifty-five percent. And again, if you look at the top of that report, you'll see where revenues are more than expenses for the year of one hundred and forty-six thousand, eight hundred and eighteen dollars. Are there any other questions on those charts?
Go ahead, Ms. Cora.
Yes, and at what point do you draw that money from the general fund to cover?
We can't draw it. So what it basically does is when your expenses are more than your revenues, that's where you carry forward from the year before, the extra cash that has come in. It's almost like a savings and it pulls. So if we run out of carry forward, then we have a huge emergency. And that's why Mr. Kramer is going to talk to us about rates.
Okay, thank you.
So at this point, we're not okay, but we're better than we could be if we had an extreme emergency. But that's going to be what Mr. Kramer will talk about.
Yeah, I'll wait.
What, do you have an estimated amount of what we got in carryover?
For water?
Or is that the numbers you have on top?
Well, if you look at the water chart, you'll see in the revenue side, the carryover for water is one million, one hundred and seventy-eight thousand, one hundred and sixty-six dollars. So it's on the revenue side. It's the seventh number down on the revenue side.
Okay.
Okay. So when our expenses are more, that's where it draws from. So the carryforward for this coming here would be much less because we're pulling from that savings.
A question there?
Go ahead.
Jean, those one million plus dollars that we have from carryover, technically, those one million dollars is one emergency or one crisis away from wiping out that that money, right?
It could be. It could be, yes. I'm not an expert in water pipes, but yes, it could be one emergency away.
Go ahead, Jean.
Okay. For business licenses in March, we had two thousand, eight hundred and fifty-four active business licenses. We had nineteen that were suspended and or canceled. We had an increase of eighteen new ones and we had fifty-five that are still in the process of becoming active business licenses. And I'm sure you've seen Wingstop is about to open downtown. It opens up Monday. And then we have a few that are starting their process up in where J.C. Penney's is at. We have two big businesses that are coming in up there that are just starting the process. And of course, we have South Thirty-two. So over the next few years, I think we're going to see a large increase in businesses coming to town. But Wingstop on the nineteenth, it's opening up.
Also, Mr. Kramer, I'd like to make an observation. In in, a lot of these businesses are open and they haven't even finished with their business process, getting their business license. So I don't know the numbers, if these cases are included in these numbers, but there are, there are a lot of businesses that are open that don't says, it's not really fair to say they're, they have complete businesses, business license. And I think in the future, just so you'll know, and I'm sure you do already, it's rhetorical, but just so that we, you know, it's, it's nice to hear these businesses opening and they are, I've visited a few that don't have a business license yet. So I don't know what the legalities are, but I know that that shouldn't be included in these numbers because it's kind of false. You know, they, they haven't paid their complete business license or or, and also it hasn't been approved. The process is not complete. So just some, you know, just, you know.
Just so I'll keep it as above the table as possible. Joel, obviously, you can hook me anytime, but nevertheless, we are working on this. I hear what you're saying. There are some businesses, and I'll just, not to, not because it's ASU, ASU U of A Wildcat, but I'll use the Wildcat because that's like, they're operating without the premise of situations like this. This is something that I've discussed with our directors in regards to that, and certainly we are working on that process as well, not only with businesses, but anyone and everyone out there that is using their land for other than the purposes for that, without a proper license or proper, I'm trying to think of the word, Juan, where that they went through you, certainly through that, that we are working on that way. And our attorney is working with myself and the directors in regards to that. But certainly with the businesses, we certainly are going to bring them back into the fold of working under the city in O'Gallas.
So yeah, in addition to the business licenses and code compliance and making sure that, you know, if they've, if they've got a dirt lot and it's supposed to be paved or if it's, it's not even a dirt lot and it's just grass and it's supposed to be gravel, making sure that everybody is coming up to the minimum standards that the city has with regard to the use of their property businesses and what's in the code. And I always like to remind every, everyone when they, when they do get their, if they do get a citation or or if they are asked to resolve these issues is to remind them, these are minimum standards and, you know, you you can go above and beyond these, but these are are the minimum and they're there to protect the health and safety of the of the community, because if you've got all these vehicles being driven on dirt, dirt lots and grass and stuff, you got additional dust and PM-ten issues and potential fire issues if you've got, you know, cars parked in a, in a lot that's full of grass and and different things like that. So it's, it's not just an aesthetics thing, it's making sure that the properties are being, being used in the way that they're supposed to. So code compliance, zoning regulations, all of those things in addition to the, the building or the business license, because the one thing is, is with the business licenses, that also helps the city be able to track and make sure that they're making proper payments for TPT. And that's where it has a, a big impact for the city. If they're, if they're not collecting and properly remitting the TPT that comes back to the city, then the city's losing out its revenues. Sorry.
Mr. Mayor? On all these businesses that are, that are operating without a business license, do we know if they have submitted an application for a business license or is the city just kind of slow issuing the, the license or the?
Can I answer that one? Okay. So of the fifty-five that we have in process, those are businesses that at some point in time have either come to us or, like, I have somebody within my department that almost every day is going through different parts of town, checking on businesses. Where's your business license? Do you have one? Here's an application. As soon as we get it back, then they become part of this in-progress number. So on our side, we can track it, then of course, it gets sent out to fire and to pre-treatment and to community development to do their inspections. So of the fifty-five that we show right now in process, they have at least turned in the business license application. We have them in the system. We know that they're an active business or they're becoming an active business. And then the other departments do their inspections and then corrections as needed. Then once everything is passed, it comes back to my department and then that's when we create them into a business that actually has a license. If we come across a business that does not have a license, that is when my person steps in, educates them, talks to them about the business license, what kind they need to have, and then starts the process. And then it goes to the other departments to do the inspections as needed, whether it be a, a home business, a mortar, brick and mortar business, a, a food truck, a, a plot of land, you know, that they're putting cars on. So we do have at least one from my department and I know of at least one that's in the community development that are out almost every day trying to not necessarily just find a business that doesn't have one, but zoning and making sure that everybody is doing what they need to do based on our ordinances and charter.
And also, I just wanted to explain that the city in O'Gallas uses, it's a business license, a much more substantially than other municipalities do for, for business licenses. A lot of municipalities will use a business license. It's, it's a basic, oh, here's a twenty-five dollar flat fee. You just tell us the name of your business, location and contact information, because the city wants that for, you know, if there's an emergency, if there's a fire or something and we have to get information to notify property ownership and stuff like that. There are, you know, some municipalities use the business licenses to then track and correlate and make sure that TPT are being paid. But a lot of those municipalities, it's a very simple, here's my, my one-page application form and it's done that day, I have my business license. O'Gallas, we use the business license process to make additional verification such as fire safety, making sure that the property's properly zoned. And there's a lot more that goes into that process, so it, it can take time. So there is a process for that, that business to be able to, to do business while they are waiting for the completion of that. And that main thing, we want to make sure during that process is that they're, you know, collecting proper TPT and if there's any safety or hazardous issues with regard to location and and stuff with the building, that those get addressed.
Okay, thank you. You answered my next, my next question.
I was, I was thinking about that. I, I saw it.
Thank you. Go ahead, Jean.
Our fuel report for March, the city used twelve thousand, four hundred and seventy-nine point five four five gallons of fuel. And in twenty twenty-three to twenty-four in March, oops, this is January, it was in March, eleven thousand, nine hundred and sixteen point three eight eight gallons. So we have noticed there is an increase in fuel usage this year. We also have more vehicles within our fleet. Our entire city fleet has more vehicles. Every time we hire a groundskeeper, we have to have a vehicle because they have to go places. So it's not like we're wasting fuel. We have more, we have a larger fleet. And then for payouts, we had two in April. Wow, I missed that one too. It should have been April, not March. For courts, we had eight hundred and forty-three dollars and ninety-three cents in sick and vacation paid out to one person. And in police, we had one payout of sixteen thousand, three twenty-four, sixty-three in sick and vacation. Are there any questions on that? Okay. Then the last page is the water and sewer report. We had for April, six thousand, one hundred and twenty-seven active utility accounts. We have sixty-nine that were on contract. It decreased six accounts and decreased seven thousand, eight hundred and seventy-five dollars. So our total is sixty-seven thousand, one hundred that are on contracts. Within our Vaiverde area of the sewer, it is at three hundred and thirty-four thousand, five hundred and sixty-eight dollars. It increased by three accounts from last month and increased four thousand, three hundred and ninety-four. We are working with legal. When I get the reports, I submit them over so we can start to track down the, the really big people, really big offenders, I guess you could call them, so that we can take it to the legal side. But they'll be on this report until it's all settled.
Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you, Jean. Yes, sir. That was last, last month's monthly report.
Jean, you know, we, I don't think. Jean, you know, we, I don't think we've been kept abreast on on the audit that was supposed to be handed in a few months ago. Can you give us shed a little light on what's happening there with?
I had a meeting with the auditors last Wednesday. And they just sent us an email late last night, early this morning. They now need an updated attorney letter. He's responded to that. They sent me the the corrections, that the findings. And I'm working on my response to their findings. So I'll have that done by this afternoon. It'll be submitted to them this afternoon. And then depending on their response to Mr. Essid's email will depend on if they say, okay, we're taking the letter as is, or if they want an updated one. Everything will be submitted that they've asked.
And I submitted a very, call it aggressive, response to their request for an updated attorney memo, because I just don't see the the reason or the need for it or why it's taken so long. You know, my response to them this morning was, can you can you please explain why a formal updated attorney memo is necessary and why it's taken so long? It's been over a month and a half since the clarification responses were provided. You'll recall that they asked for clarification on a couple of the claims. We responded to those the very next day. And I told them, I've never had an audit request, an updated memo. And the mayor and council are getting very concerned that the audit's not completed and wanted the audit completed before the next fiscal year budget's approved. So I told them, I don't have a problem providing an updated memo, but the information's not going to change. And that's also going to require me to coordinate with outside counsel who are handling the various different lawsuits or claims to get updates from them. Because all that information is collected and coordinated and included in the attorney memo. So I said, we're having a special council meeting today. And I'd like I'd like to explain to them why the delay and why the additional memos required. Please respond to me as soon as possible. So if I if I get an update today as to these questions, then I'll immediately share it with counsel. But I have no idea why this audit firm is going this route or why there's any issues with regard to the the legal memo. Because that really doesn't have an impact on on the audit. All that does is provide information with regard to outstanding and potential claims and liabilities. And those don't, none of that's changed in the last three months.
Go ahead, Vice Mayor.
Mr. Estes, do we have a multi-year contract with this auditor? Or we do for or solicit in bidding for for our next audit?
That I am not sure.
It's an annual contract. So at any point in time, with, of course, counsel's direction through Mr. Kramer, we can always go out to bids on other companies.
And there are other audit companies that do municipal audits. Bert, I'm trying to remember the.
Heinfield Meach was one.
Heinfield Meach.
For our EBT.
Burton Hancock, CLAs. Who's doing this one? So to answer that question, no, we don't have to go with this audit firm next year. You know, there's multiple different firms we can use. It usually is helpful to have consistency, to have, you know, to use the same audit firm. Because then, you know, the new firm comes in and they've got to gather all this additional information and stuff. Whereas if you use it, if you're consistent with your audit firm, they have the the basic information and understanding and history with with the city. But that's that would be a council decision if if council wishes to to switch firms and go to a different audit audit firm.
On this current contract with the auditor, is there a time limit for them to process the audit on time?
So technically, to be on time, they would have to be published by February 28. But we put a disclosure on our website already that states that it would not be done in time, which then covers the city and it covers them. It also kind of covers the audit general because they have a copy of that also. So it all it all kind of depends. Using CLA, we've used them for years. We had the same principal person. His name was Dennis. I'm sure, do you remember Dennis used to come down once a year? We had him for many, many, many years. Mid-audit, not this year, but last year, he left the company, which brought in a new principal partway through the year, which then, having a new principal, a lot of the things started over. That principal who's still with the company but is not our principal this year, we have a new principal, and that is Jean, who came down and spoke to you guys last July. She's asking if she can come down and speak at the June 4 meeting to present the audit to you all. So as long as you guys are okay with her coming down June 4, she would like to present the audit to you on June 4. And Ms. Montiel had a little conversation with her, not last week, but the week before. So she's very open to speaking to any auditors. You know, she's always available. So she's our new principal for this past year. If we choose to stay with them, she'll be the principal next year.
Just so then I'm going to interject a bit on this. And this audit is from 2023, 2024. So this is from a year ago, from your past. That's how far behind we are. The audits that I, you know, say Councilwoman Montiel, the company that Nogales Unified used for years, and certainly Santa Cruz Valley used for years. These audits were done September, October. The reports were done in December and or January. That's that's all I ever knew of auditors of, of course, everything else entailed of it. But the reports, this delayed, this, I even reached out to, Councilwoman suggested that I called it Jean. And she gave me some some of the information, all that. But I said, let me see what, you know, from the, she sent me from 2022, 2023. Again, that's the only thing, I didn't get anything of current. And I stated to her, I said, I, my expectations of the city manager for this next year is, we get these audits done on timelines that I'm expected, that you're expecting. And the reports given, be it City of Saralita, be it in City of Phoenix, and where else did I look, City of Tempe, all get their reports. And they're giving the presentations to council in December or January. So that would be my expectations as the city manager to this company. As you asked, Hector, it's certainly important, do we need to stay with them? Well, if we stay with them, that would be my expectations of, this is the expectations. If it's not done, then you didn't meet the expectations that we want. This going into June is, to me, I just don't understand it, but I have to accept it. Because again, this is from previous, and I don't want to throw rocks again, but this is previous before I even got foot into this door. But now that I'm in this door, that's my expectations. I told that to Jean, who is this, the principal, said, that's what I expect for next year. And if you want our business, that's what I expect. And anything that putting, throwing things out what our attorney says, said, come on, really? Let's get this going now. And that's what I said. So the report in June, of course, that's for 2023, 2024. I said, then you're just going to have to turn around and come back again in September. So if that's the expectations for council to stay with them, that's my expectations as your city manager. But I already relayed the message to this company. Thank you.
Yeah, so like Ms. Estes says, you know, I I called myself and all of you know, colleagues, that I have been one to to ask for the audit. We, so I personally called the auditors and I talked to this woman, Jean. And she she kind of had her own rationale, if you will. So one of, so that I won't spend too much time on our conversation, because it was, it took some time. I wanted to get to the bottom of it. Because if you recall, we've been late. The city has been late also in providing information to the auditors. And you will be listening to Jean. I've asked her to come and talk to us. It could be really transparent, you have the opportunity to ask questions, the same that I did with her. So there's a little bit like Mr. Kramer says and the attorney. It's like our own, you know, audit. We know what the IRS will be asking. Every year, we have it prepared at home. We know what they're going to ask. We have a file of all the information that we have to submit to our accountants, if you will. So it's kind of the same thing and like this lady Jean was saying from this auditors. It's like things that that should be given to us, should be, you know, ready when we ask for these things. We all know that. And she calls them internal controls. There's a little bit of both. You know, there's got to be internal controls, like Mr., I 100% agree with you, Mr. Kramer. You know, it's like you hire a company, it should it should produce, right? And so, but it's not ironic and not a coincidence, it's been late for three years. It's not, there's some, there's a problem there. And we we need to address it. And we just can't say, you know, blame it on on this company. Obviously, they're nationwide, they very successful. And and if they're not, then like Mr. Kramer says, we need to look at it. But she also, you know, I wrote down internal controls. She's asking the attorney for information. We already know what the attorney has to submit to the auditors. In fairness to this firm, you know, they've been at, you know, he's he's taking care of so many other issues. These issues, these things that the auditor is asking you, we should, the city should know they're going to be asking for real estate information and lawsuits and all of that stuff. We should have all that in place. And that's what she was referring to, internal controls. So there's a little bit of both. And I think we need to also look at our side of it and see how we can improve in these delays. That's how I look at it. So here we are, late again. And you know, when I sit on the desk and ask for the audit all the time, I just feel like it's it's become a joke now. It's not a joke, it's not, I take it very serious. So it's fair to hear from this company. Because, you know, we switch companies, we, last year, if you remember, it's on record. We 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 sat here and we were, we were gonna, you know, the past manager and people were, we're going to change companies, we don't like what they're doing. And then we brought the lady that is going to speak to us. And she's like, well, there's other issues too, you know? So she provided her rationale. So what we need to do is look at ourselves and see what we could do better to make sure we have all this information ready to go. It's not like she said, this lady said, it's not any different every year. We ask for the same information. It's the same thing. That's what, you know, our accountants ask every year. We need this, this and that, becomes sort of like a procedure already. And that's what she, I think, refers to internal controls. So we'll hear it from from the horse's mouth when this lady Jean comes and we can ask her the questions. That was my conversation with her.
And I think Jean's ears were ringing because I just got a email from Jean. It responded to my, and it said, a formal memo is not necessary. A correspondence, if there's been no change from the last response is sufficient. We are looking to issue the audit and are required to have an updated response 14 days within issuance. So I just responded and said, do you have my confirmation that there's been no changes? Let me know if that's not sufficient. So let's get the audit issued.
I have a question, Mayor. Mr. Kramer, are we going to have that that audit, mayor and council, days before the the June meeting? Because it's 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 kind of hard when they do the presentation and then for us on the fly, be making questions. So are we going to have this at least two, three days before the the meeting so that we can review it?
Well, I would hope so. And I will, the expectations are, when they get it done, they get it to us to get it to you, certainly. And piggyback onto what Councilwoman Montiel said. And those of you that know me, you know, I don't hide from anything. And I'll fight and do everything I can. And certainly, if it's internal, then if it is internal, then my expectations with the business office will be just like everything else that I've done, as you've known me for the last six months, is that the process, procedures and protocols, my three Ps, will be in place. And if it is people, our people, not doing their job, well, then that as the city manager, it's my job to hold them accountable, as I've been trying to do. And if it is that process, then I will do what I have to do too, to make sure that that process is implemented so we don't have these delays. If it means the reports or information or teamwork or whatever they're not doing, then I'll make sure that happens. Because this next audit is my audit. So I'll make sure that happens. Because now it's reflection upon me. Again, I'm not trying to pass the buck, but that 2324 audit is not my audit. But the processes are now mine and this next audit will be mine. And I guarantee you, I will make sure this is done properly. So I'm not trying to run or shy away from anything. Because if it's not being followed, we will follow it. And we, if people don't like that, that they have to step up and do more of their job, then so be it. That's what they get paid for. We all get paid to do jobs.
Thank you. Anything else on the audit? Good. Move on to, continue with the budget.
Back to me. Oh. All right. Well, we've got three areas I'd like to cover today. Certainly, I will start with, I believe, we'll start with what was brought up in our last council meeting. And that is our Water Infrastructure Finance Authority, WIFA, projects funding. And I even printed out, this one is more for those of you that really want to get geeky and technical. So if you want to look at that, go ahead. But then you have your two sheets, the bigger ones, one on water and one on sewer. And on those sheets, for instance, the water is your blue one. The question was arisen and was asked. And if you look, you'll see all the locations and projects. Well, I'll work over, you see all those streets. Engineering plans all have a check mark beside it. You go all the way down and you'll see what the engineering was paid. And then the estimated cost for the projects. ADEQs approved all these, I'll work that way. I'm working from left to right, estimated cost of the projects. Construction completed. How many of all those projects that we paid for engineering? How many did we get complete? Five. Again, this sounds so redundant. And it's not like I'm trying to hide behind all this. But again, this, I had, I didn't have a hand in this. This was all done before me. But I come from the world of, why would you pay engineers if you're not going to do the project? Much like we're doing with what I said with the bank building, soon to be our administration building. That's a project, focus on that, get that done, move on to the next one. Working on with the armory, focus on that, get it done. Some of these, again, are, you know, all of them are important. We've sat down and I'm not trying to bring certainly Juan into this because Juan has been working with us with, when I say us, Jean. We did our last project that you guys did approve. We did meet in the middle of that because we were trying to be fairly fair and balanced. Because of those of you that know me, I am very frugal at times. I've been told too frugal. But nevertheless, I have to, we have to be conservative, but do well with the projects. So to answer your question, there is what was completed. There's what were engineering that were paid, ADEQ approved. Now it's finding those $13 million to do the projects. And I put in the schedule, a payment schedule that you should have of exhibit As for the loan agreements, just so you know how we're paying this off. And how are we paying this off? With what savings from where? Pardon?
From our water.
From our water and sewer. But that's our water, and I'll just get through this and then you can just, it's, I don't want to spend too much time on it because it's, you guys can see it, I don't have to. That's our water. And then you go into our sewer, the same as well.
Got a question on the on the water, miss?
Okay.
The Camino, Camino Sol Marina Ellis Street, is that the one we just approved?
Yes.
Okay.
That's the one, thank you for, that's a good question. Because I want to make sure we updated that. Because these sheets were, as I said, you see, I just had them revise this from two days ago. So we have current information. Yes. Oh, well, soon to be six.
Soon to be six.
PBA, yeah, one to be, hopefully they get done on time. And when's the deadline on that? We have it in the contract. Do we have liquidated damages in it? We darn well do it now because Mr. Essis and I made sure of that. So there is a project completion with that. Yes, sir.
I have a comment, Mr. Kramer, on these projects with the WIFA. When you get a chance that you get together with Juan or anyone that's involved in this, it'd be nice to have a game.
When you get a chance that you get together with Juan or anyone that's involved in this, it'd be nice to have a game plan. Because these projects that weren't finished, well, eventually, I'm hoping that we're going to get them done. And on, on, on these projects, if we do continue doing it under WIFA, we, the company that do this is only liable for, I think, 12 or 15 feet in the street of pavement. But we need to have a game plan. If we get these projects done, to have the money to pave this, I mean, I don't see us, it's kind of weird that we would fix the, the, the water sewer and stuff like that and just have a nuggly patch on, on that road. Why not do everything complete, even if it takes us a little bit slower to do it? But to get that whole street done, we're, we're, and then after that, Mr. Kramer, try to get a, a maintenance schedule going for the city. If, if possible, seven, five and three years on, on the roads. Because what I've been seeing is that we fix roads, we, we do the whole pavement and it's real nice. And we just leave that street and we don't visit it until we go back maybe 10 years and, oh, this street, we can't fix it anymore. But if we maintenance, we can, we can lengthen the time of that street. But I think that we need to just pay attention more of how, what roads we fix and then go back three years and, and, and do maintenance on it and, and just extend the life of that road. A lot of these roads that we, that we need to fix right now, you, you, we can't ship Seale or Fox Seal anymore because they're no good. And, and I think if we would, we could have done a little bit better job maintaining the roads. We could have extended the life on some of the streets that need complete pavement.
Very good insight. Let me ask the council, what was shared with you on the five-year plan last year? Or the year before, or the year before, or the year before?
The present one.
Right. So that's why I said, good insight, right? That's something obviously we're going to change because we should have a five-year plan. And it's not just sitting around with four people deciding on something. There is what is called technology. And they're also expanded technology, certainly. And if we don't know it, you should know it, AI is going to be controlling a lot of this and they're using AI in cell 32 and every other company that's coming in and anyone else is using it, including the attorneys.
There's an AI for attorneys.
Exactly, there is and they'll.
That's where all my legal advice goes, right?
But with, again, I'm saying that it's, it's going to change, it is changing it. So if we don't get the city of Nogales utilizing what you just said and putting all this information for letting something other than our minds, letting AI figure something out that does in 10 minutes that takes five hours to do, we certainly not going to do that because we do need a five-year plan. And it's important for the future of Nogales. It's important for after each and every one of you, some of you sooner than others, I know, two more years, not trying to count, but certainly. But it's certain, a year and a half, there you go.
I think he's counting.
Exactly. He's counting. But the point is, and even after I leave and truly, it is, it's important for the future of Nogales because we need to have a game plan, what you just said. And that's what it is and I'm certainly going to piggyback off of that later on what I'm going to talk about. But it's important that we do that and I agree 100%. And as what, and I didn't bring him in, but he did want to come in and talk about this. That would be Michael Vasquez, even said that he probably was going to be, he said, Joel, I'm not a politician. Probably, I'll probably be stepping in on toes. I said, that's fine because he was going to be very strong worded about this because he wasn't happy with it. And his question, and he was not happy with paying, I'll just say, I can, and you can correct me if I'm wrong because he told both of us, he wasn't happy for paying all the engineering costs. That's one thing he said. And exactly, I just kind of just said that, what you just alluded to, certain Saulo. If, if we paid, we shouldn't have paid that. We should have just focused on project, 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 and like you said, 100%. Replacing sewer lines and water lines is great, but then you leave the street kind of dismal. Not cool. Not cool for the homeowners. So just, Mr. Doyle, just let me finish on that because unless, I just want to finish out with Michael said. He's, I told him that just let me talk to the council, he'll come back. He said, I'll come back there. You've, we've had him, you've chatted with him on a certain, certain topics. I just told him that I'll just bring this up, I'm trying to keep it narrow, but to the point, this is where you're at as far as the water. Mr. Doyle, I'll turn it back to you then.
Thank you. My concern is looking at, at all these engineering costs that were spent. I mean, it doesn't take a genius to figure out how many projects they can handle. So why are we, why, I don't know, again, to the extent of how many years you're going back on this, but still.
I don't want to say under your administration, so I won't say that.
No, but the thing is, you know, this, this is still, there, to me, there's something wrong here. That's, that's, I mean, it needs to be investigated. At least have another closer look at it. Because why, why would they have projects like what we have here in Bista in Seattle? Did they get that done, 226,000? They spent 226,000 just for engineering. Actually, closer, closer to 227,000. But, you know, now I don't know who your professionals are and your staff, not, you weren't here, but, but the ones that are supposed to be responsible for looking ahead and realizing that either the resources are there or they aren't. And if they're not, why, now are these engineer plan, plans that they did are going to be good for the future? Or are they going to be outdated?
That's to be told, who, you know?
So, so that's what I mean. How can you have so many different projects going on when they know? Because that's their, their, that's their experience, they know they're not going to get completed. So why are they getting engineers? And who are these engineers? I mean, who's, are they getting money under the table, somebody here or what? No, this needs to be checked out. That's not right. That's what I'm saying.
Again, I won't disagree, but I can't, I will say this, that you know where I'm standing, what I'm doing, what we're doing, what with Joe, certainly by bringing in companies that were going to manage this, want project by project, hiring, they're going to do the architectural, they're going to do everything to that effect, it's all one package. You already know what it's going to be. That's it. You're going to know from start to finish what it is. I hear you on this. Why this is done, I don't know. Do our other entities in the county follow this pattern of what this, with this? No. Do our school districts, because I always try to compare what other government entities do? Does Nogales Unified or Santa Cruz Valley do this? No. They start with one project, they get a complete, they move to the next project, get a complete. I mean, the city, excuse me, Santa Cruz Valley went out for a bond, over $25 million, much like this. But they completed all the projects, they didn't do anything extra. They stuck to the one, one, one. Nogales Unified, much to the, what they've done in over the years with the heating and cooling and lighting, same thing. They hired the outside agencies, be it Verge, whoever we did at that time. We did the ADM group out there. I'm not giving plugs, I'm just saying other companies, which Mr. Estes explained is part of the pool. These guys, again, did they go out to bid? I don't know. I'm not going to go back and look. Were they just given the contract? I don't know, Mr. Doyle. I don't know if I want to go back to look. If you want me to, if you're tasking me and the council says, Joel, do an investigation, I guess I could. However, I am saying this is where we're at right now with this WIFA loan. We are making payments from those areas. That's why I'm bringing up the next phase of this because it's important. How are we going to get these projects paid for? You guys want to take out another 15, 17 million dollar loan? Because you, you ask the question, what happens with the money? We're just on the brink of just staying above, I don't want to say water, but we're staying above sewer and water by just minimal amounts in our account. And if you have, if we have something happen dramatically that's not good and that are, and I'll say this even so, you know, Mr. Doyle, water lines and sewer lines are much older than in this city. We all know that, right? Especially our downtown areas or whatever this, you know, wherever we've been. Eventually they're going to break. That's no question, they're going to break. How big of a break and how long and how much is it going to cost? Again, that's, that's the question.
That's why we can't afford to be throwing money away. Like this, or it's a big misspent or whatever. Because like you said, we have WIFA loans, but did some of that money get shifted over for these engineering projects?
You know, I don't know what, I don't know what, what, what the open books were for the, for you, for the council. We, I've been, you've all told me before, a lot of this didn't even come in front of you. A lot of the projects didn't even come in front of you. You didn't know even a lot of the times what was going on because there were no reports given. I know that the Western Avenue, how many times did you get a report on that? Up here, from the person that was doing it, that went on for an extension of three more months. Were they coming once a month explaining the project? Were they coming once a month to say, hey, we need an extension because we don't want to incur liquidated damages? I'm just bringing that up as an example. Did they? No, they didn't, did they?
No.
Right. So then to answer your question, there wasn't a lot of information provided to council. I can't change that because I don't know why they, I can't answer that question.
Mayor, just to type up more like a comment. From what I remember, when I used to talk to the person that used to be in charge of this, when they got the, the permits from ADEQ, I think one of the requirements was that engineering be included in order to get these permits. So if I remember correctly, we went on this, on this belief system that we were going to be able to pay all these 32 projects with $14 million, which obviously when we pulled the trigger on it, we quickly found out that, which was on Royal Road and, and Rancho Grande, that we were in deep trouble. Because half of our money was gone on those two streets, just on those two streets. And then we, and from what my memory serves me correct, we jumped to Western. But the permit from ADEQ included six streets along, correct me, Mr. Herrera, it included like six other streets and it was at 6.1 million dollars. And that's what was going to tap us out. So I believe that, you know, why was so much engineering paid? It's because we got the permits from ADEQ. Every single project, we have the, the permits. But I think we had to include engineering in order to get those, those, those permits approved from ADEQ. So it was money, like you just said, it was money thrown away. When we knew already that we were not going to, we were not going to have enough money in our loans to, to, to pay off these projects, it was just, it's not viable. So it was money from the beginning, it was, it was already thrown away.
And I'll keep you posted too, because there's something going on with ADEQ with, with runoff and water runoff. I'll get more into the details. Mr. Estes and I just got served with the paperwork from ADEQ that we had to sign. That ADQ was down here five years ago. I have a meeting with them next Wednesday. I'll give you more reports once I get the information. It just hit me yesterday, it came to my attention yesterday afternoon, correct, Mr. Estes? He just got it. It was stated that Mr. Estes had already known about it. I don't believe he even knew about it because he, like me, didn't know about it, even though it was stated that he knew about this paperwork. I'm not going to get into much detail. I'm just telling you, to answer your questions, there's even more of this and I'm bringing it up because ADQ is not secret. You could go and look, it's not a, it would be public record. But nevertheless, I will try to get that, we're going to work on that to get it straight. Because it certainly impacts the city of Nogales, what ADQ with permits. And they could revoke permits and they could stop us from doing certain aspects of this city. I will keep you informed of more once I know more. It just hit me yesterday, so I will let you know. Because you brought up ADQ permits, this would be part of that. So, exactly. So again, I can't change the past, I'm only trying to clean and rectify and move forward, but keep everyone informed, including everyone and anyone who's listening. Because that's important.
Again, along those lines, Mr. Kramer, you know, as elected officials, we're responsible. We don't want to be seen like the elected officials in the county. But people want to know how come they didn't respond before that money went, was disappeared? Now, I don't know how much money might be disappeared or misspent or what, but we do need to look into it. And eventually we will give, give you that direction. Because I don't believe there's a council member here that wants to be put in a bad light in front of the public. Because we're here to represent them, we're here to be accountable for them, transparent. And, and basically you're doing a great job right now. But we still need to go back a little to see who did or didn't do, or did it wrong? Or there was money misspent, mishandled? Because there's federal agencies that'll, that'll help you look into this. That's our, that's our job to make sure that when we get loans and federal money are involved, they're, they're responsible to look in, to make sure that that money is not misspent.
I will say this, Mr. Doyle. I'll, I'll use the word, probably not that way. I'll just say that there was probably a paper trail of this because we do have legitimate, the plans are there, the engineers were paid, everything to that effect. All those engineers are going, yeah, more work for us, yahoo, we get paid, here's the plans. So we got a whole set of plans, we're, they did their job. So with that said, it was probably not done proper in a sense of project, project, project. Exactly. The fact that we paid all these engineers, they were just going, more business for us. Hey, great, I don't want to throw any of these engineers because some of them, they're all whatever, it's not the point. The point is they got business from us, draw up the plans, sure, that's good. I'm just saying that because I don't want to use the word, those words. I don't want to go to that route because I think it's more of, it wasn't managed how it should have been, being it through either my office or through other offices. But I will say through my office, because this office should be directing all that with the directors, working with council and keeping council appraised. So I'm just saying that, I'm not discounting, I'm just saying I think that what, what was spent was spent. And I think we just try to correct it, correct and move forward in a better path.
Yes, a better path would be that these engineers guarantee their work. Because right here, we spoke about in the last meeting, Camino del Sol Marina Alice, water line replacement, engineering, $65,000. There was two engineering companies doing it, one for sewer, one for water lines. Both of them did it wrong. They put, they put the lines over each other. Our engineering department had to go and redo the plans and we still paid them. If that should have been guaranteed, they should have corrected it instead of our engineering department. In other words, we paid out $65,000 for nothing because they didn't guarantee their work, they did it wrong. And at the end, our engineering department did the work. That bothers me.
I hear you. And like, like I said, I'll do whatever I can to continue doing the path that I just have laid out. So that's the water, the sewer is the same way. And if you look at sewer, I don't need to go through there, but we got even more plans there. Yay, all sorts of good plans completed. And this is an easy test, how many completed?
One. Just one.
Just one. So I don't think we need to keep kicking this football around because I think we understand exactly what's going on. Certainly with our WIFA projects, WIFA funding. You saw the payment schedule, you know where the money is coming out of. So I want to make sure you have all that because it's important that we share all that information. You know it's coming out of sewer and water funds. So as I said before, we are hanging on with those funds at what we are charging. With that, any more questions regarding WIFA?
Go ahead, Ms. Montiel.
Mr. Kramer, I just have one quick question. So, so if you look at the engineers paid, the, on the right side, on both documents here, I mean, they're talking about a paper trail. That's how, you know, everything in the real world is investigated, there's always a paper trail, especially if it involves money, right? Follow the money. So if you look at the engineers paid, then the names are there. So obviously the city released these funds to these, that companies. So there's your paper trail. And also, you know, it's all, you know, you look into open books, which I frequently do. So you look into the, like Mr. Doyle says, I mean, I think we need to be responsible and I know it's not something, something you inherited, as you mentioned, and which is true. And I appreciate the fact that I've never seen a document, I know this looks like Kramer's work. And I, it's very easy to understand, it's very transparent. And it's very easy to understand, it's very transparent. It's just, you know, you can't deny what's on there. And it's like, you know, one project has been done under sewer. But yeah, we spend, you know, in engineers, $700 plus thousand dollars. And that's, you know, that's for me very concerning. But there's your paper trail, it's just the fact that we have paid out, the city has paid out. So, you know, why authorize the payment? And I know they're going to pass the buck and I was told to do what I, you know, was told to do. And, but we still have a responsibility to, when we see something that doesn't look good. And I think this is for the future and doesn't, it doesn't smell good. I think that we need to, you as the city manager, need to hold people accountable. And I think that that's some start there. I'm sure you figured this out, you're much smarter than I am. And you figured out that that's your paper trail, like Mr. Doyle says, that there it is. So I have a question and it's just something now that we're going to talk about salaries later on. For the last few years, I've always asked about salary increases, right? Accountability and so forth. So we have a project engineer. So, you know, we have someone that, well, at least I don't know what it entails, right? The responsibilities. But, you know, these are, these are jobs that perhaps you can start, you know, narrowing down the responsibility. I mean, a project engineer, I think, or director, whatever you want to call that person, should be looking into these. It's like a team effort, you know? It's like, so, because it's, it's a lot of projects, but yet we have specific person to look at these projects. From what I understand, that that's what that position is for. It's a, it's a well-paid position. And so maybe you can start narrowing down the responsibilities of some of these people. That way, we don't get this again next year. It's not a repeat of one project, whatever, 20 some project and sewer and one of them was completed. But yet the engineers, I don't kind of blame the engineers that were paid because honestly, I mean, that's, they got paid. It's us that released the money, like Saul always says. They did what they're supposed to do. We hire an attorney, does what he's supposed to do, right? So they were paid. So it's really, you know, we got to look at ourselves, going back to look at the city the way it's managed and holding people accountable for their actions. So that we don't see a repeat next year, we don't talk about this again. We see all these check marks, completed, completed, completed. Because these are public funds regardless.
I concur with you regarding this and certainly each and every one of you that had input to this WIFA situation. But again, it's important to answer your question, Councilwoman Montiel. I look at it this way as well. If we're outsourcing and we're paying for people to do things, then in-house, we have the same people paying them, which way should we go? Well, I'm going to go with the way that's going to be most productive and the most upfront and things to that effect. If there are staff and there are people that work in the city that I'm seeing that we can do this at this cost, then why at this? Well, then yes, I'll reevaluate that, certainly. It's, I'll, you know, put it in my perspective of if we're, if we have a job for five people, yet we have eight people there, why do we need those three people? Exactly. Right? Without throwing any names or any departments or anything to that effect. But yes, it's about streamlining. And it's about being efficient. And it's about, which I'm going to step into right now, but it certainly correlates, is the city of Nogales cannot continue doing business as they're doing business because we're not an employment agency. We employ people, but we're not an employment agency. That would be for our TOS and TOS, when they have private companies, they're then the employment agency because they can employ. But taxpayers, no. With taxpayers' money, we're not an employment agency. We work for the people and we should be efficient. We shouldn't have jobs just because we have that person's been there for a while, for 10 years. It's been, that's what they always do, well, what do they do? So that's my next step is, I'm going to find out exactly more and get more ingrained into this is, just really what are we doing? And what is each and every one of us doing? You know, you all know what I'm doing, but probably whatever, I know, I'll just go on that. But I need to find out, and I know what the directors or some of the directors are doing, but I need to find out more of what the employees are doing. Because in order for us to, not tonight, today or in June, when we approve the final budget, is to go out and start doing that. But in the future is, if people that are working hard, then those people should get paid accordingly and get paid fairly well too, actually, I see it. Merit pay. I'm always a big believer in merit pay because that person's working hard, even though it's kind of hard to do in the city, but it certainly can be done. And if it means eliminating two people because these other three are working hard and those other three can do that five people task, then so be it. I hope, kind of, I'm trying to allude to this because it's important. I hear what you're saying and yes, it needs to be done. And I probably will step on some toes, but you know what? Been doing that for 29 years, 30 years, whatever, in this city. Everyone knows who I am, at least some people, some of you don't. And as I told the chief, what happened to me this morning, but that's fine. Well, some people greeted me really well with the F-word, but that's fine. It happens.
But in order to hold people accountable, you need to have evaluations and we don't even have that structure. So you'll probably work on that in the future.
Yes.
That's my comment.
I have, you know, the sad thing about this report here is that, like Councilmember Montiel said, we'll be seeing it next year. I don't know when they got these cost estimates, but it'll probably go up another 30, 40% in the future. So it's going to be a lot more difficult to complete those projects. So we definitely need to move on this.
These costs are from four years.
One question for Mr. Estes. The legality, the legality of, on this loan from the WIFA, since we got the loan, $14 million to complete 32 projects. Obviously, we didn't even come close, but was, was the terms of the loan based on the number amounts of projects that we had to finish to spend these 14.5 million? In other words, these projects that were not completed, do we have to go back and try to use WIFA funds for this? Or can we just take them out and try to finish it on our own? Or how's this work?
I would have to take a look at the WIFA loan documents, but I would highly doubt that the WIFA loan documents required the completion of all 33 projects. Because what should have been done is, you know, it should have been looked at, okay, here's 33 projects, here's our estimated, engineers' estimated costs to complete these 33 projects. The estimated cost to complete these projects, just from the beginning, were going to be more than what the WIFA loan was for anyways. So I think what they look at with regard to those expenses is, were they paid in proper expenses for the purpose of that loan? Were they paid for the engineering and design of water, wastewater, so that they weren't used in other aspects of public works or something like that? That's typically what the loan documents require. They don't require that, okay, unless it's a very project-specific loan, that, you know, you would go back. But like I was talking with Rodney, you know, if these numbers are four years old, roadway construction has doubled in the last two years. It's gone from, from almost $2 million a road mile to close to $5 million a road mile. So the numbers are going to be way off. But I, I would highly doubt that the WIFA loan would have a requirement of completion of all projects as opposed to use of the funds for these projects. Because as Joel mentioned, the way this should have been done is, you go through and you identify all the projects that you have. You identify what your estimated costs for those projects are. And then as a council, you establish your CIP, your capital improvement plan, and you determine which projects have priority. And then you focus on those projects that have the top priority because you know, you don't have the money to do every project you want to do. No municipality does. So it's a matter of reviewing and designating and having those priorities established by the council through the CIP process. And then focusing on those and knocking those off. And then once you get those done, then you go and you reevaluate and you, you know, that's the typical process. You know, as Joel said, you know, the funds that were paid out to the engineers are likely legitimate costs and funds. They just shouldn't have been done because they should have said, well, we're not doing the engineering on these 10 projects because we only have funds to get five projects done. So we're going to do the engineering on these five projects and focus on these. You know, the only things on, just from a glance of looking at this sheet, there's only really, there's four items that stand out to me. And those are the costs that are above $100,000. Because all of that, anything above $100,000 should have come to council for approval. And that would be the one mismanagement thing that would have been outside of policy as opposed to, they're just mismanaging because, it's just being mismanaged because I'm, I'm spending all this upfront money on design, but I, I don't have the money to do construction. And the problem is, is on some of that, you're going to end up doing double payment because once you get the money to do the construction, the design may be outdated and may not be valid and is going to have to be updated and you're going to spend more money to update it and bring it current. So that's why you just focus on the specific priority projects that you have.
Mr. Kramer, just for the record, you weren't here when we started this. But when, I didn't laugh when it was presented to, but I did question that we didn't, that, and I'm not an engineer, I'm not an expert in this, but I did question that if we had enough money to finish all these projects with the $14.5 million. And I was told to mayor and council, absolutely yes, they did their homework on different municipalities. They did different quotes from different companies. And we got the whole, we did our due diligence. And you know what we found out and now it really stings now that we see the, you know, the fine print or, you know, it really, it feels like that we can't get rid of a bad sore. Every time that we talk about the WIFA, it's just, and they came back and they blamed COVID inflation. But from the get-go, it was not done correctly. We were never informed of anything, they never gave us an update. So it's just one of those things that, I'm glad, Mr. Kramer, that you're taking control of this because there's just no way of, you know, getting up there and saying, yes, we have enough money to, to complete these projects. And now, four years later, well, we can see how many projects were done, which is, at this point, I just have to sort of laugh and move forward because there's no reason anymore to try to figure out. I know what went wrong, we all know what went wrong. And it's part of project management. And, and so I hope, Mr. Kramer, that we can find our way to finish these projects because it's been the history of the city of Nogales that when projects don't get done, they're just thrown in the back and we move to other projects and we don't finish them. So I think, Mr. Kramer, that we need to focus on finishing this big WIFA project, these projects, we need to finish them. We just can't set them aside and forget about them and start a new things. We need to finish them.
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, I don't know, are these projects in a priority status? Are they listed as some type of priority? Because I think, you know, there's a lot of small projects that we could start knocking out of the way, at least, you know, for.
I don't, yeah, we did go through it and we did look at a few more that were, have some priority to it. But I think that, to answer your question, I am going to go through this and exactly what you said. Councilman Hector Boharkas, that it's getting the money to pay for it.
Okay.
And that's what I don't want to venture into yet. As far as the WIFA stuff, I think we can play taps to this now. Because I think we're going to put it to rest. Because you probably won't see this again, once we spend it down, you're just going to see the amortization schedule of payments. Tried to say that correctly. But nevertheless, the payment schedule for our loan, because this is a loan, you'll see it. It's a good rate, but we're going to be paying that down for the next, how many years?
15.
15 more years. Well, I probably won't even see the end of it because I won't be, if I'm still here, I'll be surprised. I'll be the longest-serving city manager ever. But nevertheless, we won't really discuss, there's some funds remaining left. And to bring up your point, maybe with some of the projects that we look at are small, that we probably get done, we'll use that money. But this, we'll spend that down this next fiscal year. I don't want to keep, we spend a lot of time, a lot of words on it. I think, as I said, let's play taps. Mr. Doyle, taps, you know, to put it to rest, right?
Just, just one last comment on that and for council to be aware going, going forward, when you see projects come in before you and stuff, and I just made this comment to Rodney. You know, I've been doing construction litigation for over 20 years. I was like, I have never seen an engineer's estimate be anywhere near accurate. And he's like, it's kind of like meteorology. It's like, you know, it's an estimate. And that's not to knock engineers or anything like that, but they're not the ones out there actually doing the construction, incurring the costs and stuff. It's kind of like the joke of, you know, the engineers who design the engines for vehicles, they don't work on them. Because if they did, they would be designed in a way to where you could work on it a lot easier. But just know going forward, you know, whenever you see an engineer's estimate, you know, you got to take into consideration that, that, that amount is probably not accurate.
And that's what we're doing with the new administration building because you're going to have four or five different contractors working on it. The engineer was the gentleman that you heard, Joe? He's the engineer. So we should have said that when he was here. But nevertheless, he would have laughed and he would have agreed. But the point is, is each and every one of those people in that facet of what they're going to do, that's why you're going to see this next contract with about five or six different contractors saying, we're doing this, we're doing that, we're doing that. And exact the cost of what it's going to be. Exactly. So that's a good point, but we'll make sure Joel hears that again. Actually, Joe, they've done very well, but they were going back and forth with Joe representing McKinstry and Joe to get that contract. But I don't want to keep saying this, but I'm going to say it one last time. That's why you needed to see this. We're not going to do this, we're moving forward. I'll keep you abreast of the money that we have left. Certainly, Mr. Boharkas will certainly look at whatever little projects we can do with one. I'm telling you this right now, I'm going to roll into this because I'm trying to keep you guys here for no more until 1 o'clock, if that, 12:30. Because there's only two more items, unless you need a break.
Go ahead.
Just so that we could just move on. I would like to request that David, Mr. Vazquez, give a presentation so that way he tells us himself if it's okay with you, Mr. Kramer. Not in the next meeting or whenever you find it, I know it's going to be packed so that he can himself inform us about what happened here.
I will probably look to August to bring him in.
Yeah, that's fine, August.
Because I think June, we're going to have an July.
Yeah, August, September.
I'll bring him, yeah, he'll be fine because he'll just give us an idea. I don't think that, and I stole a lot of his thunder, just so you know, because that's what he would have said today. But I'll certainly bring him in just for the forecast or what we're trying to do as well.
Thank you.
All right, now with that said, I'll leave salaries to the last one and we'll move into this. The city of, and this is my sheet and yes, this is Kramer's, the way I do it. Don't look at the yellow quite, that's my secondary, but I'm trying to keep it on one sheet so we didn't go sheet to sheet to sheet. But it's pretty basic, it truly is. And just to give you an update, I really don't need to talk so close to the mic either. I met with Liberty Utilities with their group because there is a new regional manager. And I met with their finance people, one in California and one in Phoenix. Because I am revisiting the contract that they have with the city of Nogales regarding their wastewater. And they're very concerned, but I'll bring, whatever contract that we look at and if we redo it, obviously goes to our attorney and comes back to you for approval. I'm just letting you know. But I will say this, that there, you remember what I said? They're going with the Corporation Commission to raise Liberty Utilities, which encompasses Rio Rico, probably 90% for water and probably about 40% for sewer. That's the sewer lines that tie into our line. That's the sewer lines that tie into our line. And when their sewer lines are old Rio Rico, when I say old Rio Rico by the golf course, all of that area and that little area in there is sewer. Where Calabasas Hotel used to be, for you historians. Anyway, it was there by Mr. Wise's family, through a little history there, all right. And then it runs also on the east side from the hotel all the way to Rio Rico High School. But not in the hills, just in the valley area. So all that is sewer. Well, with that said, they're expecting their rates to probably be approved by the Corporation Commission. Corporation Commission regulates the private entities or the stockholder companies. They have no say in what we do, and the municipalities have their choice of how they invoke their rates. But everyone else is there. With that said, currently, and you see ours, and now I'm going to jump onto my page. City of Nogales residential account water charge average is 2933. Sewer 3356, that's on the average, okay? We're just going averages here. Don't look at the yellow right now because that's going to be come back. Look what Liberty Utilities is. What's their water charge? How much higher are they than us? 26.25% higher. If they get there's a proposed increase, which they're looking at probably getting, it's going to be what? 65%. So you mean to tell me that it's probably going to be approved that the people and the residents of Rio Rico are that much more wealthy and encompassing than Nogales? That's all, we all know, we have friends, relatives, you have people living in Rio Rico, we all know Rio Rico. It's Nogales, Nogales, Rio Rico, it's the same. We are the same economic as well as everything else. Friends, relatives, everything, school districts, working together, it's all the same. We all have the same economic levels. They're going to be 65.33% higher. There's a, there's a means to my madness here, so just follow along. Now we're going into the sewer. Currently, the sewer is 59.97%. If they get their approval, which I said they probably will, what is that? Almost 100%. Wow, wow, and I know that if that happens, over there, we just accept it and Rio Rico is just, okay, that's what it's going to be. Granted, there have been people petitioning to the Corporation Commission, that's what this, how this works, and Corporation Commission hears lawyers from other sides and everything to that effect. They work in the municipality, or not municipality, they work in that industry. Plus, they're also getting, and this is the lawyer speak, by the way. Because when I was on the back on the board, they didn't really know what that 81 cent surcharge was going for. But it's there, and both for three years. So you saw the difference between us and them and the comparisons of that. Now, I'm going with one of the main companies for our waste management. And you look at the greater of that is 23.1%. So that's about what it is. However, that charge is 23% more. How many, anybody live in Rio Rico? How many pickups do you get in Rio Rico a week?
One.
How many do we get in Nogales?
Two.
And the green?
One.
Three, right, total?
Three, total.
Correct? One in Rio Rico. And yet the Rio Rico residents, all are going, okay, there's different companies, but generally, that's the main company that charges that. 23% more, one pickup a week. If we did one pickup a week in Nogales, just a month, just you're you're cutting two thirds of your transportation costs right there. Do we, and it goes back to what we were saying, do you need all the people then, Ms. Montiel? If we just did one pickup a week? But you're streamlining again. I'm just bringing this up without stepping on people's, but again, the comparisons are there. Actually, Rio Rico is now larger in population than Nogales, by the way.
Yes.
So with that said, and Mayor, you were going to say something before I move forward.
Well, I could assure Rio Rico's economy, household is higher than Nogales.
By by 5%.
Or more.
Because you have to take in consideration and and we have Ms. Cervantes in here who can attest to this because we used to have to do this and where you were principal. And because I worked on the school district, I knew this. You have to get a general accounting of your residents of your city that attend schools. It's called free and reduced lunch. Think back of what the Nogales's was, 90? 92? You know what Rio Rico's is? 85 to 88. And only because the school district also grabs Tubac. So now I answer your question on Tubac, well, Tubac, Tubac is Tubac. They were included in our school district findings. So with that said, anybody that resided in Tubac that went to school goes to Rio Rico School Districts or Santa Cruz Valley, so they're now figured in that income levels. To answer your question, and then I'm not trying to dispute it, but I'm just trying to say they're very similar because the free and reduced lunch count are the same in both districts. Along with the Title I funding that each district gets based on economic levels. So I'm using federal data to support why Rio Rico and Nogales are very similar in household incomes.
But but even even your your students, Nogales has open enrollment. A lot of your students come from Rio Rico.
Right, and that, well, yeah, that's that's a loss for that district. It's called the brain drain, what I used to call it.
You know, and you know, my my issue with, I understand the the numbers and all that. But the house, the household income and the age that we have here in in Nogales is a lot extremer than what Rio Rico has. You know, you could probably say a good high percent of Nogales residents are retired, are elderly, senior, and all that.
Correct, correct.
You know, which don't don't have the extra income like the Rio Rico families.
I'm not disagreeing with that because that isn't intangible, certainly is there. And I will keep moving forward so then then you can discuss because I'm just going to say one other thing.
Go ahead.
Because I don't have, I don't have any say in this game, other than providing information.
Continue.
So with that, we've covered what the water and sewer. Now, I brought in the 2023 and 2024 revenues for water, sewer, and refuse, which is our waste management. If we even went raised our rates to just what currently Liberty has, I didn't even figure what they're going to raise it to. But if you use the 26.25% for water, and if we would have did that, just thinking five years ago, if we would have just stayed current, that's generally what it would have been every year, 875,000 more a year for water. Look at your sewer. Using the same principle, if you were charging the same sewer rates as Rio Rico, $2 million, you're talking close to $3 million a year? Five years ago, if you would have had those rates, would you have had to take the WIFA loan out? Probably not. And then you're obviously your your waste management is your refuse. And then again, it goes into that next year, this year currently, I just projected that those the levels are probably going to be up, but again, it's the same. But generally speaking, if the rates were raised five years ago, instead of doing the WIFA loan, you probably wouldn't have had to take out the loan. Yes, Mr., you're correct, Mayor. This Nogales, it's hard to find homes because there aren't any homes available, that's why you have a lot of young people moving to Rio Rico. I'm not disputing any of that. All I'm here to tell you is showing you the differences, saying that if you don't do something now, well, then plan on taking another WIFA loan out next year, and the year after that, and the year after that, and the year after that. Let's keep taking out loans. Because that's what you're going to do. Keep taking out loans, and you can fall back and say, well, you know, we can't afford it because these people live here and they live here and we we really just shouldn't be doing it. But the sewer lines and water lines, they don't care. They just keep getting older, they just keep breaking. But you can take out loans up to a point where Michael will come down and tell you, which, thank you for bringing, because he's going to say, don't take any more loans out, you you guys don't have the sustainability to do it. One, because you don't charge enough on your sewer and water to sustain it. Because you take out more loans, you're going to keep pulling this income, we're already paying that loan off with that. It's going to be more, but your guys are asking, what are we going to do with the projects, well, there's going to be more projects coming up? How are we going to pay for them? They don't give grants anymore for that. Grants will come in through what I'm trying to do with the lights, streetlights, and plane services and all the stuff that they still provide grants. Very rarely do we get grants for sewer and water. Yes, I understand all that, Mr. or Mayor, I understand completely, and I'm not discouraging it. But it's it's a hard decision, that's why you got elected, sometimes you do have to make hard decisions. But if you're going to sacrifice the city of Nogales's future by being, what should I say, just saying, wow, you know, we really shouldn't do it, we won't want to step on, we can't really do it. All you're doing is delaying the end of 10 years from now. Because 10 years from now, you continue doing what this is doing, because your city is going to be, your infrastructure is going to fall apart. That's just my saying, I'm not trying to be the doomsday here. But we already know, you saw the list of what projects are needed to get done. Because those sewer and water pipes are going, are needed to be replaced. Those need to be replaced because they're already going to be start springing leaks. And those are just what we have now, with five years from now. So I'm just bringing the information to you. I'm the information guy because that's what you hired me to do. I'm not the decision guy until you say, yes, Joel, do it this way, then I take directions from you. But I just want to let you know what I'm providing to you is important because it is the future of Nogales.
Yeah, Mr. Kramer. I I think one of the things that you left out that WIFA takes a close look at is if we, and the problem that we're getting now that we're overspending and we're not charging enough in rates, that's one of the factors they use to not give out a WIFA, approve a WIFA loan to the city of Nogales. They will look at that. And if we're one of the lower rates in the state and we're having trouble with our infrastructure, they will not give, they will not approve a WIFA loan anymore. So we got to take that into account.
Thank you for bringing that up.
Vice Mayor?
Mr. Kramer, what about viaverde water rates? Are they higher than the cities? Because, you know, some of the residents in in Nogales live, pay viaverde water.
I, you know what, I didn't even reach out to them because I, you guys gave me the directive to reach out to them about possibly working with them, and I got kind of the door shut on me. Because from what I was told that it's now no longer the, I think there was a gentleman that, the family, a man, correct? Yes, he no longer, and now it's spread out among four or five different individuals. They're very content of what's going on, they really don't want to work with the city of Nogales, that's what I was told. So I didn't reach out to them about water rates. I know I did reach to Tubac, Tubac is $50 monthly water, again, that's Tubac. So I didn't reach into Valiaverti, but I certainly certainly bring that up. But I was trying to make it just a large comparison of Rio Rico, Nogales, without going to Valiaverti so much, or Tubac. But I I I could take that, I could bring that into you if you want. And certainly, I was just trying to make a big comparison of Nogales, Rio Rico.
Once you change water rates for the for the community here, and if they go over what Valiaverte is charging, you know, there's going to be some some arguing complaints.
From this residents of Valiaverti?
No. The residents of Nogales.
I know.
I have a comment, Mr. Kramer. When Mr. Velazquez made the presentation, I remember we did two things that that one year for the WIFA loan, and before that, we did, we floated the bonds for the P S P R S to pay it down. But what I remember what Mr. Velazquez said, because I asked him, well, why can't we get a bigger loan to pay pay down the unfunded liability? And he told me that we were kind of tapped out as far as if we, it's not a matter if we can get a a loan or a bigger loan, is our credit rating is going to take a hit if we take more loans out. So that's another thing that we have to look into.
Exactly, because the city of Nogales, actually, we do have a good credit rating, I will say that. Somebody asked me once what it was, I did look it up. So we do have a good credit rating, but yes, we certainly will take a hit for that. I am looking to the state just to see what they see, that, again, it's through the governor's office. And GADA, it's called, GADA, I'm just looking at that. The person actually overseeing it is a graduate of Nogales High School, 1987, for those of you that want to reach out to him, he certainly, but he he's part of overseeing that, the economic development for the governor. I just submitted it, doesn't mean I'm committed us to anything because, you know, I'm not doing that, I just want to see what we're, what we possibly get funded for that. But just something, it's another loan type process, but that would be for finishing out the streetlights and such. The reason why I'm bringing that up is because those kind of loans, you definitely want to get. These loans are only just, we're paying, we're paying, we're paying. If we take out a loan that improves our infrastructure for energy costs, then you can use almost the energy savings to pay down that loan. With these, you're not getting anything to pay it off. And that's why another thing is that I'm glad you brought that up, and certainly what you brought up. You're not getting anything to pay these off unless you raise the rates. You're going to have to take these out again if you don't raise the rates. Because there's, you already saw the list, there's there's more projects to be done. What prioritized, yes, there's certainly we're going to do that, but there's just, this is right now, what's three years from now? And Mr. Estes even said, these costs are two years old, three years old. So it's it's a bigger picture of all that. But to right the ship, the way I see it is, is again, yes, I know, nobody wants to pay more, and I understand all that. I'm the first one to say that, I'm always about trying to keep the costs. I've been told Kramer's this, but so what? Nevertheless, I use coupons and I use apps, and yes, I do. My kid's talking. Nevertheless, it's important that for the city of Nogales and for the residents and for the older residents that are here. They have to understand the infrastructure also, they don't want to drive on poor streets or have water lines breaking. Or what we're dealing over by Lincoln, the constant backing up. It's not because those lines are great, it's because those, that's telling you. It's the same thing of age, those of us that are getting older, we need readers, that's the sign. Well, it's the sign that those pipes someday are going to break here shortly. And we're going to have a mess over there. Those are the signs, and all the things that you call me about, Mayor, about, oh, the pipe, you know, the couple of times, not all, but ten times. Or you call me, or you call me, or you call me, or email me. All those, that, those are the signs that it's aging. So again, I'm only bringing that information, I'm not the one that say, you guys, you need to do this. I'm just telling you what I'm recommending because if you don't, you're just kind of putting the city of Nogales in a bad situation.
Vice Montiel?
Yeah, and and you know, Mr. Kramer, I'm glad you're bringing all this up, and I sit here and I'm reflecting. And again, if my memory serves me well, like Salo says, you know, it's been already three years, Hector, we've sat on the council, and we've repeatedly asked for a long term sustainable plan, which you can relate to. You know, we have one at home, we don't build a bathroom, we can't afford it. We don't expand in our, you know, house if we can't afford it, we we look at our savings. And and every time I sit there, you know, I listen, and and, you know, we have a healthy budget, we have all this money, we have carryover, we have this, we have that. And here we are sitting. And thinking, because there's no long term sustainable, a sustainable plan in place, where are we going forward? Where are we going with these infrastructures projects? Where are we going with, you know, raises? We just, you know, we have a little bit of money and we give raises, it's like, you know, we get an increase at at home, you know, we get a new job and we go buy a, you know, a a car that's more than our raise. And and, you know, it's just common sense, we've got to run the budget like if it was our own money. And we wouldn't do the things we're doing if it was our own money, we wouldn't, I certainly wouldn't do it. So there's, you know, we have a general plan that the voters voted on. I have never, I'm yet to see it being discussed. How is that aligned with our plan here at the city? The last time, one was, don't have a heart attack, but the last time, and Mr., in fairness to the attorney, the attorney had to tell us, you guys need a plan of action with timelines, responsibilities, people that are accountable. It was kind of embarrassing to to get an attorney, a law firm that has, shouldn't be telling us to do. And a a a plan that is aligned, and I know that you inherited this, I know you're working on it, but I know you're not new to plans. I know you're not new to all of that, you know. Those things are expected when you run schools, to have a plan in place, to run any business, I'm sure they have. I'm sure they have one in their law firm. You know, everyone has one. We have to sit down and make people accountable with a plan that is tied to the general plan that the voters voted on. That is having respect for the people that voted for this plan. That's how they want their money to be used. If we would have followed one, if we would be following the general plan, and one, and, and an individual plan. Last year I asked for one, and it was almost like, how dare she ask for us a plan of action with timelines and responsibilities that everyone should have. And that way, then you tie it to, you tie it to...
Laurie?
Laurie, yeah. How can we make people accountable if there's no evaluations done? So I know that you're sitting there and saying, ooh, you know, we're, and the reason I bring this up, because I can't help looking at payroll schedules here. You know? So, and I've always talked about with, you know, Anna and I have had these discussions. You know, we narrow the gap. You know, we just, people, you know, we pay people according to their, you know, what, what, what type of job they did. Accountability goes back to it. It's tied to it. But we don't, if we don't have evaluation plans in place, because that's how, you know, that's how we, we, we make people accountable, and also it protects us legally. When we have plans, you know, in place to tie that to your, your responsibilities. So all this is just not new to us. I think we're all sitting here, and we kind of go in circles every year. But I'm glad that you, you recognize that we need something in place, you know, that's tied to our general plan, that the voters, I think that should be coming up. It's a 10-year plan. It was, it was agreed on 2019, if I, my memory serves me well. So all of this is just all tied together. So the water is, yeah, we have to look at the increases. Some of you sitting here have been very adamant about increasing the rate so we can be competitive, because it is a business too. You know, we can't have salary increases if we're not bringing in income. It has to be sustainable. It's all about, you know, sustainability. We also need to look at the reality. You know, times are unpredictable right now. Because of, you know, all the tariffs and everything that's involved, regardless, it's not about which political party you're in. But there's a lot of unpredictability out there. So when you have unpredictability, you don't spend. At least that's my philosophy. Is that my personal philosophy? And so I, I'm, I, I understand why you want to increase rates. I really, really do. You see, you're, you're forecasting, you have vision. And that's the leader that we need. You need to look, not just be a follower, but you're a leader. And I understand why you're doing that. And I commend you. And I know it's stressful.
It's all, it's all good. But yes, and they, certainly the departments, they haven't even got to meet me personally now, and I'm like, how I evaluate? So that's even more. But you're letting the cat out of the bag. But certainly, the departments are going to have their goals. They're going to have to do that. Directors, I, I will be evaluating directors. So that goes part of their goals. And that's part of my evaluations I will be doing. Certainly here in the next, starting, we get through this. It ties into what you're saying though, Ms. Montiel, is the city should have goals as well. The council, we should have goals. We should have goal setting for the council. And I'm certainly looking at what we can do in August or September, because I think that's when we'll start doing this. For goal setting for council, for the city. Starting with at least a three-year deal, because some change. And with politics, some people come in, and then you get a whole different council, and they say, oh, we don't like that one. Let's change this one. Why do you want to do it like that? What was, why I don't even like Hector anymore? You know, that's, I understand. I know, I'm just, I'm using you, Hector, as the, as the example. The point being on, as I'm saying, is, I, I understand. Being on a former school board, all of a sudden we get a whole new board. It's like, what? Change everything. Fix it. Don't figure, whatever. But yes, we certainly, that's why I said only a three-year deal, because it could change. But it's important that we have goal setting. I agree, we are going to do this. But in order to have goal setting, I need to have a future of what we're doing with this. Because this is what controls us all. And certainly, it's important for the departments with this. And certainly with the pay of this. It's all tied in. And I'm not discounting everything and anything you said. Again, this is a study session. Council, you have a lot of thinking to do. Obviously, you're going to get, this is open to the public. People are going to hear this. Of course, you're going to hear all the, you're not going to hear too many of them saying, that's a good job. We want you to do that. We, we think you're doing a good job. Raise the rates on us. You're probably not going to hear too much on that. You're going to hear the opposite. You're going to hear, one, what the hell is Kramer doing? Are you listening to him? Does keep it this way? Because this is the way we've always done it. Two, really, we can't afford it, because it's an older community. We can't do that. Three, whatever, I can go on and on and on. You're going to hear all that. I know that. I understand that.
Don't worry about Joel being stressed out. He was just telling me this morning that this is such a stress-free job. He just, yeah, exactly.
No, but Mr. Kramer, and, and, you know, I think we, you know, we need to get the whole picture. I think council and myself, we need to get the whole picture on what our budget's going to be, how it's, you know, how, you know, what are the projects that we're looking at? What are our financial standings? You know, normally, you know, we've always been getting a, a book with, with all the directors' needs and all that. So, so we could look at it and come down to our June meeting and be able to have, you know, all that information in time to look at it and, and see how we're going to move, you know, with, with wages, move with increases, move with projects, move with, you know, the city supports of, of certain entities and stuff like that. We need all that information, you know, beforehand. I think that's, do you guys agree?
Mayor, I, I think we need to get a closer look, especially when we have, you know, we gave a, a salary boost last year. And right now, we have another one before us. But at the same time, we have expenses going over, overboard, I guess. And, and, and so it, like the city manager said, everything's tied in. We need to have a closer look and discuss it a little more.
Well, if you guys might have another budget session, we can do that. The first one I was trying to do, just with the budget, about the departments. I think we, we spent about three hours doing this last time, correct? And what I stayed in that is, if you have any particular questions, please come and see me to discuss the departments. I did make the cuts that I needed to in those departments. Some I didn't even put money into. You, I think you gave them all the sheets, correct? Yes or no? It's a yes or no question. Did, did you guys all get the budgets for the departments? Let's see, yes. Okay. So you have that. I think I gave you what, exactly what I was putting to each end budget, correct? Yes? So we had that at the last budget study session. This budget study session was to give you more in-depth of the water, sewer, and waste. Certainly what, what my suggestion is to hit those three, because those three are your primary. And the final one that I'm bringing in, that I haven't discussed yet, but we certainly will get to that. And with that said, the books that you guys are so used to having, I will make sure we get those books to you, so you can have those books. So then for the budget meeting in June, you'll have your books. And you can get that in, so you can see that. In your books that you get, you'll get what we had streamlined, just with what each item was. You'll have a better idea of the budget for each of those departments. Where we at was standing with money. And certainly then, the water, the sewer, everything to that effect. I will have this on there as well, if you're wanting to do that. If I get feedback that by then says, no, Joel, don't do it, I won't, won't put it on there. We haven't talked about raises yet, but since we just streamlined into that, I will say, go back to the final piece of what you just said, Mayor. I will have your books for you. She is working, she being Jean, I won't use pronoun, Jean, common noun, is working on that to get your books for you by...
If you want for the meeting June 4th, I can have it till the 30th, so they'd have that entire, if they want it before to look at, then we should have another budget study session. So then we can, well, if, so I guess what I need, sorry. I need guidance from the mayor and council. And that's why we had this meeting today. What I presented to you last time, the numbers did not contain any salary raises. What I presented, did not. So I need guidance.
Well, that's something I was, I just said, yes. I'm saying, okay, let's retract this, because the mayor brought this up about the books. The books, I'm saying books a lot, because books are the priority to get all the departments that we discussed from last meeting.
Yes.
Right? This book didn't have this stuff before, did it? Right? So stick to the books that they're used to, I guess. Get that. Because that's from the last study session.
Okay.
Without, now we're going to discuss salaries.
Okay.
Because again, I added this in, because these pieces that I brought today with this study session was important to discuss, because council members, three of them, four of you brought it up last meeting. It's important, because you know the future of Nogales is this as well. Huge. That's why it was important. The department's budgets depend on obviously, sales tax, which again, we didn't really discuss, but that's something we could have a study session on, our business development. But I'll wait for that after our presentations from our civic organizations, one in June and one in July. And we'll have that in our goal setting. Certainly, you sit on that council or the board with the business development, along with Ms. Parada, certainly it's important. Mayor sits on the council with the Port Authority. So with those civic groups, any other civic group locally? No, just that one? Okay. So it's important that we talk about what their goal setting is with us as well. Because they should be an extension of the city. So going back to that, that's my vision of your city manager, what I'm trying to do with your budget, because again, we talked about it last time. So I'll get your books to you. If you want to have a long drawn-out meeting about that, or come and see me before, certainly. Again, I streamlined and I made cuts, particularly to all the departments. They all know that. So get those books to them. In here will be separate. That's something I'll just bring up. And it'll probably be just one sheet regarding sewer, water, and sewage. With that now, we're rolling in. We've got, what is, as long as we want. But, all right, I was told by council, I have three minutes. So with that said, I'll get into my auctioning voice and talk real fast. I, I cut the salary increase proposal, because again, yes, you gave raises at 3%. Correct me if I'm wrong. 5% last year. Oh, 5% last year is a good chunk of change. The first scenario that I gave you, that you had looked, that I didn't propose publicly, was what percent? Three? Three? Because you were in that first meeting. Laurie is here, because she's our acting interim HR, and she'll can obviously jump in to everything that, what we're talking about, because she was in that discussion. I gave you the tiered, for $400,000 for pay for fire and police departments, under a $400,000 budget. And then explanations of thereof. And I'm, so you can see that. And what we tried to do with Laurie present, with Jean present, and myself, is we're trying to, and jump in, Laurie, you can correct me if I'm wrong, because you certainly had some input on this, and what we're looking at, certainly Jean, is we're trying to correct the wrongs, again, of scattered pay scales.
Actually, there, there's, I've only been here two months, by the way. But in looking at the past two compensation studies that the, that the city had, it was clear to me that there is some market disparity for the city of Nogales. And that is particularly true with the lower-level employees, the lower-tier employees. This approach, where these, the employees are broken down into three tiers, is somewhat of a novel approach from my experience with the, with the budget and looking at pay increases. I've been in public sector work for 25-plus years. And it's novel and different. I really like it. I think it is a really unique and interesting approach. The lower-tier employees, there's greater turnover in that group. There's the market pressures from other communities, where they can go and make more money. Separate from the police, that's a different issue. But with the regular employees, non-police, non-fire, this accomplishes a couple of things. It helps mitigate the market disparity to some extent. And it really sends a message, I think, from the city that you, you value their contribution. There are a lot of employees that are not paid a lot, and they do a lot of hard work. This approach as well, with the flat amount, in addition to a percent of increase, it's just a really interesting, and I think a very good way to recognize those employees while not discounting the impact of the middle tier and the high tier, because they too will get a flat amount and a percentage. And then if we look over at the fire and police departments, which the police in particular seem to be pretty low on the pay scale as far as market. This helps to mitigate, mitigate that as well. So just in overall, in looking at how this is broken down, and I like that, you know, on the, the pay amounts, where you've got 37,290 is the average salary at the lower tier, break it off at 69,436 with middle, and 105,145 at the high tier. I don't see the same level of market disparity with the middle tier and the high tier on those compensation studies. So that's my feedback on this approach to the increases as far as the budget. Do you have a question?
Thank you, Laurie. And we are working, still working on getting whatever steps were made. Experience, at times that were experienced, given, given for people, and especially what we're looking in the depart, other departments where, and those of you that, again, I'm going back to education. In education, if you're a teacher for 10 years, you have 10 years' experience. If you move into a principal, do you get 10 years' experience as a principal? No, that's great. Well, the city of Nogales was doing that. For every promotion that was being given, given there, move them there, and move them up another 10. Just an FYI. So we're, we're trying to correct, correct if we're...
Yeah. What, what I think you're, you're referring to is the internal equity issue. And, yeah. Well, in, there, there's market, there's market equity, and then there's internal equity. And it, it does, my, my research into that shows that there are, I don't call them problems, there are opportunities to take a look at that down the road, to see if, if that can be mitigated to some extent. But this is really looking at, you know, first steps perhaps in helping to correct some of those issues.
That, that's one of the areas that we certainly are looking to address. I brought that up, because that's one of the few, not few, but one of the areas that we certainly are looking at to be equitable among people that get promoted. In fact, when I joined the principal ranks, I took a pay cut from a teacher to a principal. But nevertheless, we shouldn't be doing that here. You move up from whatever ranks in the police department, fire department, or if somebody moves up in parks and wrecks, up from there to there, wherever the department, it should be that. We're correcting that. Certainly other aspects, we'll get, you'll get a bigger report, certainly.
I'm putting together a report that I will turn over to Mr. Kramer to take a look at, that will include some recommendations on that issue, the issue of equity, both in, both market, market inequity and internal equity issues, among some other concerns that have come up during my time here.
So with that said, so you got, if you got to figure, you got a 5% raise, we're looking at this at 1.5 based on whatever, 5% last year. So this is probably a 1.5%. So that's what I'm proposing, that's all I'm going to propose on this. I'm not looking at, but I am adding for the police and fire departments, the incentive pay, which I believe is in your charter. If you go back and look in the charter, there is a, something in writing there. I'll just say something, I'm using a general term of something, but it is in there. Incentive pay for police and fire department, you'll see it in there. The way I'm looking at incentive pay is, we'll start fiscal year July. We have, and I'll just use the police department, we have somebody that's in there, serving six months, their December paycheck, they'll get that first incentive pay. They stay through January through June, they'll get that second incentive pay and their first paycheck in July. That will work both for police and fire department. But that's part of the incentive pay for those two organizations. It certainly are, our fire and safety is important. We have a lot of turnover, especially in our police department. It's a little bit, it's something. It's, again, I'm not trying to stress too much on raises because I wanted to give at least some raise because I was reminded quite a few times that, yes, we gave a raise last year. Yeah, we gave a raise last year, it was 5%, we gave a raise, I understand. And certainly that's why I'm saying what this percentage is, is 1.5. As opposed to your very kind-hearted, willing to give a 5% raise last year, but I'm at least giving a cost of living type something at 1.5. Certainly then for the police departments and fire departments. I'm not going to get into explaining it because you can read it. I tried to get it as easy as possible on this with, and my rationale, you got rationale on equity and my summary and all that. I put that in there. You can read through that. It's a very small, but again, we're hitting the upper tiers, we're getting more money. Upper tiers meaning, if you look at lower tier 182 employees, they're getting a 3.93% increase. And same with our, our employees in the fire and police of 57 and even 46, they're given an 8.8 and a 5.6 with the incentive pay. So we're trying to, or I'm trying to, I did these charts. Certainly, Seth Hill helped out a lot on this too. He's the one that came up with it, but again, like myself, he utilizes technology to assist his job and make it that much easier, work smarter, not harder. So this is what's on the board right now, you can take a look at it. We'll put this in the book as well, so your book will have that. I don't know what else you had in your book, I'll have to take a look at from my book last year to see how we can, I can add this in there to you. Again, this is a study session, you can talk about whatever you want to talk about. We're certainly, I, I just didn't want to get to June's council meeting of having a five hour discussion on budget. Now, if you want another budget session before that, or you want me to delay the budget?
Yeah.
I can do all that. I think I've laid out clear of what I'm doing with the budget. I think I've laid out clear of what your sewer water and everything to that effect on the enterprise funds. I think that salaries are very minimal but efficient. You've kind of heard what Lori's working on. That's what I'm proposing. Again, if you want to have more discussions on this, you can chat with me. But if you want to have another two, three hours before then, we can do that. I'm just hoping that we don't sit here till, I don't want to break the record of 12 o'clock for a budget study session because we're going to have more on the agenda in June as well. So, and I'm not trying to push this, I'm not, that's not my intent. I'm not trying to shove this down and say, you have to do this. No, you don't, you do what you feel is best for the city.
Mr. Kramer? Did you include the, the Christmas bonus on that?
No, no, there's, the Christmas bonus, see, the, the only bonus would be here incentive is just for fire and police. There are regular employees, we'll get no incentive bonus. It's just for the, because under your charter, you have a police and fire protection pay that was supposed to be an incentive pay. I've enacted that to bring that back.
And you set out of the general fund?
Yes. Mr. Dora, go ahead.
Again, Mr. Kramer, actually, you know, going it over, going over with Jean and HR, it, it sheds more light. I think at least I got more clarity on, on the balance of things. And I want to thank you for, or I'll tell you for explaining things clearly to the council. And it's going to make it easier for us to make hopefully the right decision that we need to make overall. So, but thank you so much for, for your input and putting things real clear on the table.
Thank you. You're welcome.
I, I have one point of clarification. When we look at, let's look at just the city employees increases. We've got a flat amount of $1,000 at the lower tier, 1.25%. And then the total cost and then the average increase of 3.93. Is the flat amount, that percentage does not go into their hourly wage or their annual? That's a separate payment. So it's not a, an increase to their base pay year over year that'll continue. It's a one-time payment this year plus the increase of 3.93, for example?
Right.
Is that for the employees or the fire?
This is the employees. Well, and, and if you look at the fire, it's the same, same idea that the raise is 1%, but they get a flat payment. And that payment is not added into the hourly wage as a percentage.
And what I'll, and with that, that's a good point. And in your book, I'll make sure that I put what you'll see on the salaries for, for each employee, what you had last time. So then I'll explain what you're saying or asking Lori, or stating. So we'll, we'll make sure we get that in the book. So with, with this, I'll just put in there what you'll see for each and every employee. It's a good point, thank you.
That is a good point.
Go ahead. That's why, that's why you're the HR director.
Yeah, that's a really good point because you were, I was thinking, so, so it's a one-time thing.
My understanding is that it wouldn't carry over every year?
Yeah, like before it was.
Into their pay salary every year would be like a one-time payment this year, next year, maybe, maybe they get it.
Okay.
It might change, or it wouldn't happen at all, it would just be a percentage. Budget here, we look at a flat amount for each of these tiers plus a percentage which would add into their.
The, the method of the madness will show up in what we give you, so you'll see the salaries pop up.
Okay, so the percentage. So just so I can understand, the percentage, let's look at the 206 employees here, the lower tier. It's a flat rate of $1,000. Okay, but then the percentage rate is kind of 1.25. That is kind of like cost of living, is that, is that, would it be fair to say that that percentage is for like cost, cost of living? But that would change their hourly rate, right? That one.
I, I don't think we looked at that necessarily as a cost of living. I think this is just giving a percentage of what this $1,000.
Yeah, I was just using that more in reference.
Oh, okay.
Because I was just trying to say that the money, even though it's only this amount, it's kind of like the total amount, just trying to say some sort of, it's a cost of living, at least to help.
You know where I'm going, Joel? So if I'm a lower tier and I'm earning 37,000, I'm assuming that's the lowest paid city of Nogales employee, 37,290, I'm going to get $1,000. That one time, I'm going to get $1,000. But it doesn't change my hourly rate for the future.
Correct. The hourly wage would be changed based on the percentage on the far right-hand column.
On the 3.9?
Exactly.
Okay. And that is added to this, that is part of the $300,000 for the cost that we're looking at for the 206 employees, right? Okay. So. So going back to narrowing the gap, which also was made by, but that's okay, right? The only, the only rationale I can see is when we talk about narrowing the, the gap is a 3.9% for example. Because they're going to get, I'm going to get $1,000 one time shot. But when we are trying to narrow the gap between the lower quartile and the higher quartile, which is a huge gap, huge, then the, the only way that I can say me earning $37,000 a year and knowing the, narrowing the gap between the highest paid is at 3.9. Yeah. So, so it's going to take, it would take a long, long time to narrow that gap because we can't fix the system. I understand that. So just so that I can clear it in my mind, when I go back and adopt this and whatever decision I make as a council member, that, that the, the nine, the 3.93 is what's going to, is going to stay in my salary, my hourly salary.
That's correct, yes.
I know, it's kind of, you know, the teacher and us, right? I'm trying to picture that.
It's just, it's broken down kind of differently with this, but it's, it's showing that the raise.
Down there, but.
And we're trying to. But look at the average, look at the average raise for each of them, but look at also what the increase is.
Yeah.
It, it, the boxes, I don't want to confuse anyone either, but it is going to be in there continuous. It's not a one-time fee of raise, next year drops, no. They're getting the raise, they're moving up.
Yeah, and, and like the mayor says, it's down here. I know it's down there, but they're not actually getting, you know, the 1,466 per employee down there equating to a 3.9. That is true, but remember, they're only getting the 3.9 increase to their hourly rate, not the $1,000, it's not being factored into.
Right, and it would, it will look that much better once you see it with salary with the employees. So you'll be able to see that in your, in the book.
Yeah, from last year to this year.
Yes, and yes, exactly. And we'll put that in.
Yeah.
To, to go on what the mayor said or what you guys were saying about the book. This will make your decisions even better with this on that. And then whatever else we present, again, as I said, going back to the book. But I was just trying to just show you the example of what we were trying to do to break down that, rather than just giving a 5% because that was so not good. Because the upper levels, the upper levels, it was.
Unequitable, there is such a word.
Right, because if you gave a 5% raise to my, to me, Joel Kramer, as opposed to that person of 37,000, I'm like, hey, hey.
And that's what was happening.
Right, and that's not cool. If anything, I shouldn't get anything and they should get the even higher.
That's what a good leader does.
Yes.
Can I continue with my questions? Okay, says, yeah, especially if you have a contract, right? You, you know, city managers have contracts. So, Mr. Kramer too, and, and the HR, thank you, HR.
Lori.
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 Lori, for, for, I, I've never, no, that's okay, I've never seen this broken down like this, thank you.
Well, again, well.
Your feedback is really important.
Why I say it's kind of novel and I really like it. Because it does give an opportunity to make some adjustments where maybe adjustments are more needed at certain levels. I understand what you said as well as far as narrowing the gap in 3.93. If, if we had a whole lot of money, we could probably do a whole lot more.
Yeah, so with that in mind, Mr. Kramer, because this is very, it's a very important to talk about it and I know the time is essence, but this, this is when we talk about the budget and we talk about WIFAN, we talk about the fact that we don't have a lot of money to spend. You know, 85% of our budget ever, in any entity goes to personnel. We know that for a fact. And that's what's been going on and going on. And we want to reward our employees, but we talked earlier about there's nothing to tie it with, no evaluations to tie that to. So it's almost like, you know, the, the equity issue comes up again. So if we talk about the high tier, there's 12 employees out of those, those 206, okay? I know they're, they're getting a flat rate of 500 and they, and they're getting the, the average increase would be like a 1.2. I, I saw you did that. But I personally feel like, you know, here we go back to equity. I mean, they've, they've been getting most of that increase and we're not narrowing the, of the, the gap. So I think to my colleagues, think about it when you go back. And, and do we want to just, you know, focus on the lower tier? If we're going to consider giving raises, I know all of you are going to say what, we give it to, what last philosophy was, we'll give it to, we'll give it to everybody, but you know, that's not always true. You know, that's not always true, the lower tier has, that's the bulk of these employees, 182 employees on the lower tier. They're barely making, ends meet, $37,000 an employee, that's what they earn.
That's the average, that's not, there are people make less.
And that's the average, good point, thank you. That's the average 37,000. Someone could, I know someone in the city of Nogales is earning 29,000. $29,000. Well, the higher tier continues to get the bulk. And so, you know, we got to, we've got to start talking and, and we, I know that, that, Mr. Kramer, I know that I really commend you again because this is so organized the way you've laid it out. And we don't need a, you know, like Jean gives us a notebook, we could read between the lines, it's pretty detailed. You didn't add a lot of stuff, even if you didn't give us a notebook. We, you didn't, you didn't add any expenditures to any department. In fact, you took away expenditures. So today what you're giving us, just so it'd be my last comment, you're giving us to consider the salaries and the raises of the water and the sewer. That's all you're doing for today. So we need to go back and think about if we want to raise the water and sewer and if we want to give raises to the 206 employees and the fire and police department. The fire and police department is important because, not because they're fire and, and police department, it's because it's, it's kind of tied to the charter, right? And, and you know, the charter is our constitution council. So I, if we could talk, when you're ready to talk about that, we can move on. Thanks.
All right, just again, I'm just bringing in what the charter said about incentive pay. That's not there, I'm bringing it back. That's one thing I'll bring back, that, because it's important. But yes, that's what, that's what will be in your books again, thank you for summarizing this. It's, it's, the raises again are, you'll see, you'll see this playing out in how it looks on each individual. Again, we tried to make those raises on the 3.93%. It's better than what the 1.22% that if I was in that, which I am in that high tier. I'm only getting 1.22 where the other employees, that's, that's the way it should be. But if we had, like we used, said, if we had more money, that 3.93 could be 6, 7, 8, 9% and stay at 1.22% for us, because that's the way I would look at it. I'm just saying, we had more money, I would give that lower tier of 182 double if we could. And same with our police and fire. We don't, I'm trying to keep it very frugal at 700,000 because again, it's not what you gave last year because if you gave that last year, it was probably three and a half million. Was, huh, see? All right, my math in my, my math in my head and the math in there it is. So I'm being very frugal then on that. Not trying to beat against employees, I'm just trying to stay in budget because we really need to be keen on what we're doing here. So. All right, with that said, we will get your books to you, we'll be sooner than that, not, what'd you say, May 30th? No, we'll be sooner than that.
If they need a certain book by June 4th, we can have 30, but if they want a book beforehand, we can get a book beforehand.
Yes, we'll get the book before Memorial Day.
Mr. Mayor? Just a, just a quick question. On, on that final binder, are you going to include the support for outside entities?
I included that in the numbers I presented to you guys last time, that included the same amount we had last year, which was 150,000.
100,000, it's 50 each.
It was, it was 50 and 50. And then we have the additional 50 voted on a computer that you guys use like towards in-kind when they want, like if the.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, if a company asks for in-kind.
Okay, yes.
It, it certainly, I'll have to get a copy of this book, the so-called book, I have never seen a book. I've never got this book. Are there pictures in there? Are there pictures in this book?
On the front.
Oh. Oh, maybe we'll add pictures too. Okay. All right. Anything else? Let's see, what else do I got an update on? Anything else on budget stuff? I think I told you what I met with and what we're looking at with AG. No, that's it for me, Mayor, thank you. Anybody in the council has any other comments, remarks? Move to a journey. Move to a journey. All in favor? All right, meaning?